Good evening, Placerville. Thanks for your patience as we wrapped up closed session tonight. It is 5:11, and I will call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Regina, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
And Councilmember Thomas will be noted as absent.
Thank you. That brings us to item three on the agenda, ceremonial items. We have two proclamations tonight, and one we are actually going to table, 3.1, the proclamation for the Shakespeare Club. We will present that one at our next meeting. There was some confusion over the date that that was going to be held on. So that brings us to item 3.2 tonight, proclamation recognizing the month of October as Cancer Awareness Month. Now, we'll go ahead and read this proclamation. This is a proclamation of the Placerville City Council recognizing the month of October 2022 as All Colors, All Cancers Awareness Month. Whereas in 2022, the Center for Disease Control projected 1.9 million new cancer cases in the U.S. with a 24% increase in men and a 21% increase in women. And between 2007 and 2020, the number of deaths due to cancer went up 15.2% in men and 8.1% in women. And whereas Images of Hope Eldorado has hosted the Pink in the Night Awareness Campaign throughout the month of October in conjunction with National Breast Cancer Awareness Month since 2013. And whereas Images of Hope's mission is to create opportunities where cancer patients, their family members, teachers, and community can come participate in all aspects of the arts and movement therapies to foster an environment where creativity can flourish with Hope Healing Here and serve all Eldorado County community members touched by cancer. And whereas Images of Hope is continuing its annual All Colors, All Cancer campaign to raise awareness of all types of cancers, early screenings, the arts and movement therapies for all those touched by cancer. And whereas local artist Andrew Vonder Schmidt designed and fabricated an art installation to raise awareness of all cancers. And the art installation, a large depiction of an awareness ribbon in all colors, has been temporarily installed at the bell tower for the past two years throughout the month of October. And whereas the city of Placerville joins cities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for everyone to make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early detection and testing for all types of cancer. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Placerville does herewith proclaim the month of October 2022 as All Colors, All Cancer Awareness Month. All right, I'm going to sign this proclamation, and I would like to invite Paul Zapatini and Wendy Guessen up to the podium to accept it and to say any words that you would like to.
So I told Wendy she could have a couple of the words, but I'm going to start off first thanking Mayor Taylor, councilmembers. Cancer affects all of us. Believe it or not, 50% of men in America will have cancer sometime in their lives, more than women. 33% of women will have cancer at some point in their lives, which is why the month of October is so important to bring awareness to this and to hopefully raise consciousness for people not only in our city, but around the country to continue fighting this. I also want to recognize this evening the city staff that was involved in allowing us to put some pink ribbons on Highway 50. They'll be going up on Saturday. Thank you, Mr. Zeller and the commission. And Pierre Rivas has been involved the last three years in allowing us to put up the big ribbon that will go up at the bell tower again on Saturday for the month of October. If you go downtown, you'll see pink lights everywhere. You'll see the pink banner over Main Street right now. We do what we can to raise the awareness. And currently, for those of you who may be listening and members of the audience as well, we have an online auction right now of quilts to support Images of Hope Eldorado. It's online at imagesofhopeeldorado.com until the 30th. There will be another online auction, banners on Main that have been up on Main for the last month or so. They will be going up for auction online from October 16 through the 26th if anyone's interested. Anyhow, thank you.
I let him do all the talking, but I really want to thank everybody here for recognizing Images of Hope throughout the years and all the support that you've given us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And stay there for one second, and I'll present you with the proclamation. I must say, until reading this proclamation, I was not aware that the cancer rates and deaths by cancer has increased so drastically over these last couple of years. Would any of my councilmember colleagues like to say any words on this proclamation?
I'd just like to say I think it's a really important proclamation. I don't know any family that hasn't been affected by cancer in some way. So, yeah, thank you.
I agree, and I thank you for all the work that you folks do.
I'd also like to open this item up to public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this, please step up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and council. I mean, this is a limited public forum, and I think it's important for all of us to be aware, as folks have shared. In my family, no one that's in my great-grandparents' generation was touched by cancer. No one in my grandmother's generation was touched by cancer. And no one in my parents' generation. In this generation, we've lost a five-year-old to brain cancer. My wife has struggled with breast cancer. And my brother-in-law is struggling with pancreatic cancer. I think it says something about the bigger picture, the things you guys are working on in terms of the cleaner environment and all of those things, and I thank you for that. And on a final note, as people know, I'm a retired teacher of kids with special needs. And my last three years were the ones that were in home hospital. And I sure know you all know, but nothing breaks your heart than a child with leukemia and the various childhood cancers. So, thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, Leo.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, triple cancer survivor. So, yeah, I'm one of the 33%. And it seems to be the scourge of our time. My sister now is struggling with cancer. My mother had it. So, it's an ongoing battle. But early detection really makes all the difference. It made all the difference for me. It's why I'm a survivor now. And my sister is not so lucky. She didn't get caught as soon. It wasn't detected as soon. So now she has metastatic breast cancer, and so her survival rate is not in question. It will get her eventually. So, thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Sue. All right. I see no more public comments, so I'm going to close this. Oh, one more. Last call.
Pardon, sorry. Hello, my name is Jay Gershon, and I visit Placerville quite often. My brother lives here. And today I had an experience, I just wanted to let you know, that I don't think everybody's on the same page that has... Well, I was for breakfast this morning, and when I received my bill, lo and behold...
Regina, are you speaking on item 3.2? Are you speaking on the proclamation for all cancers? We'll open public comment up in just a bit.
I thought it was a public commentary. I worked in your thing.
Just one, a couple more minutes.
Sorry.
And then there will be public comment. All right, I thank Paul and Wendy for bringing this item forward and for all those that came and spoke on it. We will move on to item four, closed session. Item one was, we performed the evaluation of our city attorney, and I will say that we are all pleased with her services. And item two, Mona, would you like to report out on that?
Yes, Mayor Taylor, thank you. The council did meet in closed session on the price and terms for the lease of 525 Main Street and provide a direction to staff. There was no public comment in advance of closed session.
Thank you. Item five, adoption of the agenda.
A move for the adoption.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item six, announcements to the public. Brief comments by the city council. I'll start with Jackie. Michael?
I just want to thank Supervisors Parlin and Thomas for really leading the way to getting a navigation center approved and moving down the road on that. It was, you know, it was pretty bleak there for a couple of weeks when the last item, when Perks Court went away. So, I just really want to thank them for their, you know, really determination to get that done and to move forward. You know, now the hard work begins, I think, of actually getting this stuff off the ground. So, kudos to them. And then just wanted to also flag AB 2097 by Assemblywoman Friedman. This is a bill that eliminates parking minimums by, in, I can't think of the word right now, in areas that have transit, in transit, that has public transit. So I'm not exactly sure yet how this is going to affect Placerville, where that will be. But I think because we do have, you know, we have Eldorado Transit, we have other options, it probably will, especially those along the highway corridor, will probably, you know, have that. I'll look to Pierre, I guess, on this issue. But just wanted to bring that up, especially in light of the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago when it came to the jamboree in Affordable Housing Center at the fairgrounds and the fact that, you know, it was under our limits as a city. But, and I think I had mentioned it at that meeting, that this bill was coming down anyway. So, these, I mean, that's going to be a continuation. We're going to continue to see, I mean, I could foresee this being something where it's going to go beyond just transit corridors and be in other places as well. So, just something that I wanted to flag for the community as well, because that's, I know that was a concern, but that's going to be an evolving policy matter where you're going to see less and less ability to enforce parking standards going forward anyways from a statewide perspective.
You know, when I saw this, I just thought, oh, no. Because we are so short on parking now, and if they, you know, pass something like this... And isn't it, they're going down one half a car for...
Yeah, I don't know if...
Instead of one parking space, it's like a half per car?
I'm not sure the exact formula. In fact, James might know. Or Woody. 2097 by Assemblymember Friedman. She's the chair of the Transportation Committee in the Assembly.
We need to scream.
So, and you know, it's one of these things too where in some cases it definitely makes sense. We looked at similar legislation last year at Secog. Ultimately, the board decided not to take a position on it. But there may be places where it makes sense. You know, whether a one-size-fits-all is another issue. But that's kind of, you know, that's kind of where it is right now. But I just wanted to flag that for the community.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep.
Oh, I also want to, ditto Mike's comments on the Navigation Center and them finding a solution. So, I hope that it's going to be a solution, so. And also, I attended Girls' Night Out, and I hope it was a success that it looked like it was to me. It was a good time.
Yeah, I would also like to echo those comments. You know, it's not easy to come away from a really contentious vote and put down ego and put down, you know, disappointment and all of those things and pick up the pieces and come back with a plan that's even better. So, I really appreciate the leadership from Supervisor Thomas and Parlin to come up with a new plan that was able to get consensus on the Board of Directors and move this really critical project forward. I also want to highlight that we are having our final weekend of Trip to Green this weekend, and I know that we're going to have more on that on the agenda, so I'm not going to belabor the point. But I do want to highlight that. And then October 5th is the candidate forum that is being put on by the League of Women Voters, which is a really great opportunity for the community to meet the candidates and kind of see where they stand on local issues. So I encourage everyone to either attend here at Town Hall, Terius at Town Hall, right?
Yes.
Or it will also be available on video. With that, we will move on to item seven, consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, wait. I skipped a whole section. 6.2. This is to receive and file a presentation by the Sacramento Area Council of Governments on the 2024 Blueprint for the Region. Mr. Morris, can you introduce this item?
Yeah, we have representatives from Secog here tonight to discuss this and introduce what they're planning. So, James, I'll turn, James Corliss from the director. I'll turn the time over to him.
To you. Hope everybody can see this okay. I'm James Corliss. I'm Executive Director of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or Secog. Joined here by my staff, the new Abraham Hannah Shuden, and also our partner, Woody Deloria, who I know is going to say some things because what I'm going to talk to you a little bit about tonight is the update to the region's next long-range plan, of which Woody and EDCTC will be in lockstep with us. So I want to acknowledge Woody's partnership over the years. And so, this really is a preview about this upcoming plan. So this is sort of the transportation investments, infrastructure growth, housing, jobs for this six-county region through the year 2050. And I also am going to end on just a couple of the initiatives. Definitely want to recognize Vice Mayor Saragosa and his role on Secog, who's actually been very involved in a number of these things. So, really tonight is, what's this plan? Why is it important? What's the timeline? We'll be back and really be asking all of you, along with Woody in partnership with EDCTC, to do quite a bit of community input and engagement next year in 2023, why the plan's so important. And then just to finish on a couple of the initiatives that we're running at Secog. So, I think you all know this, but as a council of governments, we represent all 28 cities and counties in the greater six-county Sacramento metropolitan region. We are unique in a number of ways, and I think, I think in good ways, which is, we're one of the largest regional planning agencies, councils of governments that covers this much area, where every single local government, every single local government is around the table twice a month. That is not the norm. I've worked at others where they rotate the chairs. People, some jurisdictions don't get to weigh in directly, but it's twice a month for us. We have the benefit of only having 28 local governments to cover such a large area. But it really does give everybody a voice at the table and a seat. The next long-range plan, we are titling Blueprint. And that in part is because it hearkens back to the voluntary regional growth strategy that this region adopted back in 2004. So, the year we hope to adopt this in 2024 will be the 20th anniversary. And that plan back then was a bottom-up voluntary, folks coming together about the future of the region. And it was done in 2002, 2003, 2004 because the trajectory that the region was on was not good. It was one where traffic congestion would increase, air pollution would increase, the economy would falter. And so, we're naming the Plan Blueprint because back then, 20 years ago, it really was the region coming together of its own volition. And we want this to be a similar kind of planning exercise and effort in partnership with the city of Placerville, Eldorado County, EDCTC, and many more. An interesting thing, I don't want to belabor or dwell on this, but you'll hear, maybe we come back next year and talk to you a lot more, again, with Woody around our long-range plan. Long-range plans are always trade-offs. They are not wish lists or, we're going to do everything. We're going to have as much money as we want. That's not the truth. The truth is, we're going to be very fiscally constrained. We have to make some tough choices about how we grow, where we grow, how we phase transportation and housing and jobs and land use. We are a fast-growing region. In the 2020 census, actually, our metropolitan six-county region was the fastest-growing region in the state of California. But that rate of growth is going to slow. So we've already seen our coastal cities and regions slow down in terms of growth rate and actually lose population. We're going to see a similar demographic trend, maybe not for a while, but we're going to see that. And so if we look at all the economic forecasts in the 2030s and the 2040s, hard to think out to those decades, but they're coming. And our growth rate will also slow. Again, maybe don't dwell on that now, but it is interesting in terms of those kind of forecasts. So, I'm going to keep going. I've got another analogy for you, but I'm going to keep going and just talk to what's on the slides. So, the overarching kind of framework around this plan, we're calling Triple Bottom Line. And that really is one where we're trying to keep the following things in balance. The notion of equity and access to opportunity, regardless of income, race, ethnicity, place, location, urban, rural, age, all of those things. We want to really pay attention to a lot of the disparities and the gaps in the transportation network and people's ability to access things like healthcare and schools and jobs. Economic prosperity, I probably don't have to explain that to you, but we need a thriving economy, and we need to be smart about how we think about our regional economy and where we invest. We've been sort of a government region, and maybe I'm speaking more about the urban core, but we've really been dependent on government jobs for too long. And so we needed to, our economy is diversified, but it maybe is not as diversified in as many ways as we need to be. And finally, the environment, clean air, clean water, sustainability, preparedness for natural disasters. I don't have to tell you about all these things up in Eldorado County or Placerville, but balancing those things is really the key in terms of our framework. The plan that we're developing, again, this is where EDCTC really plays a primary role. And EDCTC will be developing their long-range plan kind of dovetailing right into ours. But we start actually with economic forecasts, demographic forecasts. We start with your general plans locally, looking at growth around the region. And then we go from there, building different kinds of alternative growth and land use forecasts, and when we figure out what kind of transportation investments make sense based on that growth. Next year, as I mentioned a bit about the blueprint from 20 years ago, we'll be unveiling and coming back to you with what we're calling Pathways. And Pathways really are just a set of different scenarios that are going to be pretty differentiated, again, about how and where and how fast we grow in different parts of the region. And we can't, nobody can kind of turn dials and knobs, and a lot of this growth will happen again on sort of the cycles of the economy. But all of us collectively obviously have a major role to play in terms of general plans and zoning and housing and economic development and incentives. And those things are actually really critical to making sure that we get that balance of housing and jobs and transportation just right. One scenario we'll look at is very much of a reinvest in our existing communities kind of a scenario. A second scenario is kind of a balance. And the third scenario is really looking at much more, we had more outward growth and more growth in unincorporated areas and greenfield areas, and we didn't actually get as much revitalization. We're not just talking about downtown Sacramento. We're talking about revitalization of older commercial corridors and retail strips and vacant property, which sometimes is hard to get, hard to redevelop and get economic activity on. If we add all those up across the region, are these scenarios and pathways really are meant to look at the what-ifs? So, that's a preview. Again, what I hope we'll have next year for you is a lot of data around that. So we'll be able to give you numbers and metrics and measures around a number of things that I think will make that a pretty robust discussion. And speaking of a robust discussion, we want to do more than the typical, you know, 7 o'clock in downtown Sacramento, come and make public comment. We want to come to you. We want to work with EDCTC and your staff. We want to get your creative ideas about how we engage the public. How do we engage youth? How do we engage seniors? How do we engage the people in Placerville and your community to really meet them where they are? Events, farmers' markets, all the things I know that takes place in your community. We're looking for your advice and your input about where we can connect with people. We can get, talk to them, get surveys, all kinds of that, because we really want to do this. Again, this will be fed into the EDCTC plan as well. But we want to really understand where people are at in 2022 and 2023, what their transportation challenges are, how they see growth in their community, how they see their future. And we want to share that with you and really kind of co-create it. So again, just in terms of the plan cycle, the timing, we're here setting up in 2022, doing a lot of technical work right now. We're working with all of your city and county staff across the region. So all of that will feed into these kind of pathways. We do a lot of education outreach, as I said, next year, where we have these three different scenarios. There will be sessions for community members, for elected officials, and all of that will lead into what we call a preferred pathway. So we have to choose not one of the three, but a blend of what you like about those three into a preferred pathway. That gets into a lot of very kind of technical modeling, and then feeds into the final adoption of our plan, and it feeds into your regional RTP plan here for the county, both of which have to meet a lot of very strict federal and state requirements around air quality, climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, and the like. So I want to just pause there on the plan. And I can take questions at the end of this, but that's the kind of the plan section of all of this. And again, I'd love to, if Woody wanted to come up in a second and just give you a little bit of a highlight from the EDCT side as well. So, a little bit of more about some of the work that we're undertaking, some of our initiatives. We've been engaged in an equity initiative for quite some time. I mentioned equity earlier. And explicitly, an initiative around the disparities by race, ethnicity. I know this is not an easy topic to talk about, but if we had the Brookings Institution come out about three years ago to the region, look at our economy, and what they found was, if you think of their economic assessment of our regional six-county economy as kind of a health test, a stress test, if you will, they basically came away and said, you look pretty good on the outside, like you look fit, you look great. But actually, you've got some underlying structural problems you've got to take care of. Problems, like I mentioned earlier, we're too reliant on public sector and government jobs. But we also, we have a lot of disparities. We have disparities by race, ethnicity. We have disparities by urban and rural, by people's ability to access the daily things that they need to get to in their life. And so we've been working for quite some time on, the last year and a half, on a racial equity action plan to really address disparities by race, ethnicity. We lead with race, and we talk about that, but those disparities then go to income and income inequality. They go to age and disparities by age. And obviously, I know in Eldorado County, you have a really big senior population. We can see it on the demographic data. So as your seniors age in place, those transportation challenges are going to get even more stark. One of the other challenges we have in the region, we're trying to do something about. I think the last time I was actually here at the city council chambers, I was talking to you a little bit about this Green Means Go program. We, as I mentioned those growth scenarios to you, and do we have more greenfield? Or do we have more kind of revitalization[1795.26] we have more kind of revitalization in our existing communities? We've stood up a program called Green Means Go, and we're really proud of this. Again, it's a very bottom-up, creative, only-in-the-Sacramento-region approach to really trying to accelerate and incentivize more reinvestment in our existing places, our existing urban and suburban communities, our older commercial corridors. And it's hard to see on this map, I understand, but 26 of the 28 jurisdictions around the region have actually nominated, local governments nominated what we're calling green zones to kind of greenlight economic investment, new housing, new jobs, new economic development. And we've actually secured some money through the state of California to invest in upgrades to these places. So our infrastructure, I don't have to tell you this, is failing and aging, both roads and potholes, but also water, sewer, and utilities. They were never sized to take the kind of development and infill development that we think we need. So we've secured 38 million for the state of California. We have a grant program where we're rolling that out this fall. We're aiming to try to get more money from the state and now the the federal government as well through the bipartisan infrastructure law. So we're really excited about the Green Means Go program. Just a last couple of slides, zooming back out now from the six-county region to the 16-county region, we are operating, again, I think I think you know this and live it every day, but really as a huge, large economic mega-region. It's not just people living and working in the six counties anymore, but certainly since the pandemic, we have seen migration from the coasts and the Bay Area inland. We're seeing a lot of people who are moving to the foothills in Tahoe. Again, I'm going to tell you this, you probably see them all the time. But this is creating a lot of strain on our transportation system. So we've joined forces with San Joaquin Council Governments and our sister agency in the Bay Area, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, to identify projects, highway and passenger rail projects, to be able to invest in those and really upgrade our, for instance, our Capitol Corridor train service is actually the third most popular in the country for any kind of regional rail service. And we're hoping to get this third track to Roseville built, which will allow us to get 10 to 12 round trips a day. We're also working with Plaster County to looking at going through Truckee and overcross into Reno, because that's now the corridor, much like your 50 corridor all the way into Nevada is is functioning the same way. We're going to be getting the ACE train and the San Joaquin rail trains from the Central Valley are coming up to Sacramento in about 18 months. The ACE rail is with a connection to the airport and looking further north to Marysville and Chico. So these projects are really knitting this economic mega-region together, and we have a formal working group of the three agencies now that's advocating for funding in the state capitol in Washington, DC. Knitting together the larger 16-county region and now knitting together the six-county region through a trail plan. We were really proud to, again, work with with Woody and his team and many of you, and I think some of you may have engaged in the event for our launch of this this plan earlier this year. This ready-set trails is a vision to unite every community in the greater Sacramento region with a network of paved bike and pedestrian trails. So it would require nearly an additional 800 to 900 miles of trails. Once we could build that, we could get everybody in this region safely on these trails, walking, cycling, you name it, not having to ride on busy streets and deal with traffic. This is a game changer. This is economic development, it's health, it's safe routes to schools, it's all of the above. So this is a sort of a stylized version of that concept. We have a lot of data and a GPS map on our website. I'm just going to, I'm going to wrap it up here. Finally, last but not least, we've got a great program that we run every year, fifth year, we're just getting into, called the Youth Leadership Academy. So we take high school students from all six counties. I will say, El Dorado County was really good last year, getting a lot of students to come in and apply. The applications are open through through November the 4th. So if you have high school students, or you can send something to a principal or a teacher to get the word out. We run this program January through June. Students, it's hybrid, so it's partly in-person, partly over Zoom. We get members of Congress and state legislators, and we talk to high school students about how important regional collaboration and planning and housing and engineering and infrastructure is, and they seem to really love it because they come back every year. And so we'd love to get your students here from the city. And Woody, I don't know if you want to say a couple of things, since I'm now out of breath.
Thanks, James. Woody Deloria, El Dorado County Transportation Commission. Good evening, council members, Mayor Taylor. Really just wanted to thank Secog and James for coming up tonight to acknowledge the partnership and coordination we have with with Secog. I think we're fairly unique in the state that we have the El Dorado County Transportation Commission that serves as the regional transportation planning agency within the six-county Metropolitan Planning Organization of Secog. So kind of the best of both worlds. We have the Secog, the NPO, who is federally required to develop this plan to meet our air quality targets. But we also have the RTPA, EDCTC, that can develop our own regional transportation plan and work with James and his team, Benu and the staff, to integrate our plan into this this blueprint to help the region meet their greenhouse gas targets, but also meet all of our our transportation needs in El Dorado County. So we'll be developing our regional transportation plan. It'll be adopted in December, by December of 2025. So we'll be in parallel with this blueprint process, and we will be doing that in lockstep through the outreach and all of that to keep that local knowledge and awareness of our transportation needs while also feeding into the region's overall blueprint plan. So thanks to James and the team for coming up tonight.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Any questions for James? Thank you for that presentation.
Sure.
No? Okay.
I just want to make a comment. One, I want to thank James and the team for coming up and and walking us through the blueprint for everybody else. You know, I've had the honor to be on the board now for a few years, and we really did go back to the blueprint name as well, because as you say, in Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy is always a mouthful as well, or MTPSCS. So I like the blueprint name, but I also think it underscores just, you know, is as much as independent as we are in El Dorado County, and we want to do our own thing, we are all interconnected, and and we work as a region, and there's a really good reason for that, because as we all work well together, we all rise together. And so, you know, this is just another way to show like how we're doing this. And I really want to thank James and the staff for coming up with sort of the three pathways as well, because it's going to give us a really good sense for board members at at Secog to really look at how we want to go into the future, what we want that to look like, what are going to be the priorities, and here's the data behind those to be able to say how we want to do this. And so it was, I think, a really great approach to doing this. We're going to go around all six counties to gather a lot of information, as James said. And, you know, for us, you know, we get to work, you know, of course, we work closely with Woody, and then the same thing in Plaster County with their their Transportation Commission as well, which is, you know, a little unique, but it, you know, it just works. You know, I question sometimes like, well, how does that work? Like, if you have the four-county region for transportation, but then you have these other two, but it it works. And it works really well. You know, we're, I think we're lucky in that sense as well. I guess, I don't know if I have, so James, I don't know if you wanted to, on the three pathways, in terms of the infill model on on that, can you talk a little bit more about what what that would look like in terms of the infill model? Because I think, you know, especially like us, we were, you know, a little under six square, you know, miles. And so our, you know, unless we annex territory, we're really looking at, you know, revitalization of areas. So didn't know if you wanted to just add in any other comments on on that part.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we're, I mean, your your staff is great, and they remind us all the time that, you know, you're you're a small jurisdiction, there's not a lot of capacity here, right? So we we understand that. But but as you as you know, I think, well, let's let's think about a little bit about market demand. When I talked a little bit about that growth rate slowing down, what we're also going to see is a shift in kind of household size and the and the consumer demand. So we need things like accessory dwelling units. We need we need more housing options and housing choices. On the on the, you know, we are growth plan right now, and we'll, I'm sure that we'll have, we will have some of this in our future blueprint. It sees expansions into what is now our greenfield areas. I mean, we we're actually developing some of the, we have developed the last 20 years at a faster rate than we had hoped in the blueprint, more prime farmland than we said we could, that we wanted to develop, right? And that's partly because the the economic model of greenfield development is just kind of, it's there. It's not always easy, because you've got a lot of environmental constraints and infrastructure costs, but there is a financial model that's there. The financial model for doing harder, you know, it's the vacant strip mall that is no, that's now vacant because retail has been disrupted. How do you turn that into a mixed use, you know, flex space in the bottom and apartments up above? It's really hard to do that. And it's not just that there's not a consumer demand, there is a consumer demand, but the economic model is kind of upside down. We lost redevelopment agencies in 2010, and and the financial instruments are not very good for, that's, they see too much risk in that kind of stuff. And yet, and yet, right, these old commercial corridors crisscross our whole region. They are the same routes that a lot of our buses run down, and would love to pick people up if they could actually live right on those corridors. So we have those opportunities, and when we say infill, I've said it before, we're not just talking about all the big city downtown Sacramento. We're talking about pieces of cities that are kind of strangely undeveloped, or that are vacant, or these older, these older commercial corridors that really could be revitalized, I think, if we restructured some of those incentives.
Oh, thank you. And, you know, we had a, for everyone to know, we had a commercial corridor ad hoc committee last or the year before, and it was, it was really fascinating, because it wasn't, it was private sector folks coming in and talking to us about the the really hard challenges of of revitalization in some of those areas and the amount of funds out there and just, you know, it's, it's like you almost got to get an insight straight in order to make some of these things work sometimes, in order for all the the pieces to come together. And it was really telling, I think, as policymakers, to have that level of input from the private sector to say, you know, here's all the things that we need, you know, here's what's not happening, here are some of the success stories, here are things that didn't work. And I thought, for a lot of us that were on that, I thought it was it was really helpful that Secog convened that and put that together for us, because, you know, as James mentioned, a lot of our cities have, almost all of us have at least one strip mall or something that is in need of a new life, new right, new revitalization, so.
Karen, I do have a comment. I just want to thank you again for this explanation, but I'm winding down 16 years, and I've been watching this for a long, long time, and it's so, all the things that you're talking about, it just keeps evolving. And, you know, I've seen the best-laid plans turn out, it doesn't work, because something always keeps happening. So it's really, you guys are in a difficult position to try to make, to project and make these plans and make them work, because you think you've got something going, and then, you know, COVID hits or something, and it changes the whole scenario. But I want to say that it took us, I think, when we first, when I first started out, it took us a while to get a seat at the table. And now I feel, you know, the smaller rural, smaller cities and everything have a little bit more say than they did in the beginning. And I want to say that Woody and our transportation department has just been wonderful in helping promote us. And I, but it's just interesting to watch this through the years, all these wonderful, you know, you think you have something going, and then all of a sudden, something happens, and wow, it's over. Like strip malls, you know? That's a good example. They were all the rage, and now all of a sudden, they're done.
Yeah. I think it was the famous Yogi Bear quote, "The future ain't like it used to be," right? So so absolutely, right? That is, this is not a, we're not predicting the future, right? We're we're trying to actually be prepared for it. We're trying to be ready for what might happen. And we're trying to match what we do see, and we have a pretty good sense of demographically in terms of, you know, making sure that we're we're clearing all the barriers and the stumbling blocks to those different options for housing and different options for transportation. When I come back, I'll dust off our, I think it's our 2000 transportation plan that predicted the future in 2025, and I'll let you know how we do.
Great.
I would just like to say thank you for the cooperative and productive relationship that you have, that Secog has with the region. I don't think the public really understands what Secog does, but this is an organization that really serves for planning for a really large geographically, economically diverse region. And there could be a lot of tension between the rural and the urban areas of this in terms of what our interests are and what makes sense. But, you know, all of these, these small jurisdictions have a seat at the table and are able to work really well. So I just, I I serve as a commissioner on EDCTC, and I just have to say that we really appreciate the the good relationship that we have with Secog. And then one more point that I'd like to make for the public before I open it up to public comment is, these long-range plans, they are aspirational, they don't always get fully implemented, but they're really important, because all of the projects that will come up for federal dollars and state dollars, they have to be in these plans in order to apply for that money. So the opportunity to say what you want to see happen is when it comes to making these long-term plans. So whenever Secog gets ready to do the outreach and EDCTC is working on the outreach, it's really important that the public shows up and lets us know what they want to see in this plan, because that's that's where the dollars will flow from. So with that, I thank you. You can have a seat, and I'll open it up to public comment. And if there's questions that come up, I may invite you back up to the podium. Would anyone like to speak on item 6.2?
I am glad that we have a group that is looking at the big picture, because if you don't know where you're going, it's pretty hard to get there. One thing I think needs to be recognized by Secog and by the Transportation Commission is the problem of wildfire that we have now, and which lands you develop and what transportation system they have so that you can evacuate people and so that you're not putting them at higher risk than needs to be, because a lot of infill projects work very well, but you've got to make sure that you can get people out if you need to. So that's, that would be my one comment, is watch out for wildfire, because you need to do some wildfire modeling, along with your other modeling, to find out, okay, and where and how bad could it be? Because mosquito was not a real fun one. You can ask all the people in Forest Hill, that they just barely survived that one. And if you want to talk to people in Grizzly Flat, they'll tell you about the Cowalor Fire. So where we allow people to build their homes and what evacuation routes they have is something I think needs to be considered when you're doing long-range planning.
Thank you, Sue.
All right, I will close public item on this on this agenda 6.2, and thanks to James Corliss and Woody Deloria for being here to present this. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove the item for discussion. I will go ahead and open the consent calendar up to public comment if anyone would like to speak on items 7.1 through 7.9. Please step up to the podium. Seeing no takers, we'll bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Regina, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Burelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item eight. This is public comment for non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. I ask that you state your name voluntarily for the record, and please do keep your comments to three minutes or less. If anyone would like to speak on non-agendized items, please step up to the podium.
Sorry about that before I just walked in, I wasn't really sure where you were. I've never been, my name is Jay Gershon, and my comment- My name is Jay Gershon and my comment, I'm a visitor to Placerville quite often. And I know for everything that's going on today, this is quite minor. However, I was in an establishment today and when I received my bill, it came with two prices. There's nothing in the window, there's nothing on the menu, nothing at the cash register that says if you want to pay by credit card, you have to pay more money. Their excuse was it's a cash discount and I said, that's not reflected in your menu. And then they said, well, other people do it. And I said, I'm not other people, you know? But, and they said, well, it's down at the gas station. I go, well, the gas pumps say, you know, they're going to charge you 35 cents. Everything's tough. They need to be transparent. Me as, me that's been at this place many times, it's 50 cents, it doesn't matter. They have to be transparent. This is a tourist town, the businesses, it's tough, it's hard. But it's, it's still the consumers, you know, they need to know. I'm a consumer, I need to know. So I'm, you know, you really don't have like a Department of Consumer Affairs or anything and there's really nothing, you know, that I could, I would have just rather filled something out and, you know, like sent it in and have somebody look into it. But to, to charge somebody more money at the cash register and not tell them is, it's just not right. It doesn't matter if it's 50 cents. The gas pump tells you it's 35 cents. When you fill out a form to the state, they tell you one and a half percent convenience charge. Any website, any store that you go into basically where they're going to charge you more, they present it to you upfront, it's at the cash register, it's in their information, it's in their website. But to have somebody hand you a bill blindly and say, if you want to pay by credit card, you have to pay more money, I don't think that's fair for anyone. So I'm, you know, they're not, they're not all on the same page. I know you guys, you know, give business licenses and everything and there's not really anything that says Department of Consumer Affairs unless I want to go, you know, to the county and fill out, you know, forms as like a complaint. But I just wanted to let you know, as a visitor and consumer, my brother owns property in Placerville. So I'm here a lot. I've never seen anything like that before in a restaurant around here. I live a little bit closer to the East Bay and a couple of individual like fast food places have that, that are privately owned, but I've never seen it in Placerville before and I've really never seen it in a restaurant before. This is like the, like the second time I've ever seen it. The first one was a place near where I live, they went out of business. And, but this is the only other place that I've seen it at. Maybe I don't get around enough or maybe I don't know, but to get charged at the register more than what you were expecting is kind of, wait a second. We all pay for, you know, additional money on a bill for healthcare or.
Jay, thank you.
Like that. I'm sorry, my three minutes. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments.
And I want to thank Terry Zeller and the Gowersburg crew and invite everybody and encourage everybody to go out and take a look at Hangtown Creek. It's a creek again instead of a brush pile. It really is a huge improvement. So, and between that and Patty's goats, we are actually getting this town so it might be a little bit fire safer. So it's great. I went, Terry told me about it and I went out and looked at it before the meeting and boy, it's wonderful. It's such an improvement.
Thank you, Sue.
My topic's the navigation center. All of the kudos to the board of supervisors are very appropriate. At the same time, you probably can't pat yourself on the back, but kudos to our mayor, city manager, assistant city manager, everybody who showed up from the city to be able to bring this across the finish line. Kudos in the past when there was a need for a little bit of extra money and you held those special meetings. I think you did everything right. I think the devil's going to be in the details like they always say. Other cities have had similar navigation centers and you have a wonderful city attorney. We're not allowed to clap, but I'll go yay for the evaluation. And it has to be done, as you know, in a careful, compassionate, slow manner. Certain people at the board of supervisors feel like this is going to clear up a Broadway tomorrow. You know, that'll make it front with legal challenges if it's not demonstrated that you're unfolding with the outreach to the police department, the social services. I've worked with these folks. It can be so challenging when you have a supportive community and you've been in one spot for a long time. You can put the best in front of them and it's still hard for them to move. So I trust that everybody who's involved is going to realize this is the first major step, but there's a lot of steps in the future. And I think one of the crucial steps is making the juvenile hall feel like a welcoming place. I don't like to be negative, but my heart did drop a little when certain people said, leave the barbed wire. It's good to keep the homeless away from everybody and it's also good to keep the mental health folk that'll be there in a while. Neither of those approaches are data-driven. You are a compassionate, caring group of people. I hope you can spread that to your bigger folks. And on a final note, I wish that somehow they'd realize, because I hear these comments, hey, it's county property, we can do whatever we want. Like the folks from the government came from, collaboration is how you get things done. Not saying I'm the big old county and I can just do what I want disregarding Placerville's zoning rules, et cetera. Thank you again. Kudos and praise.
Thank you, Leo. Last call. All right, I'm going to close public comment. 8.2, written communications. Do we have anything to report out, Regina?
No, Madam Mayor, we did not receive any items regarding any non-agenda.
Okay.
All right, thank you. That brings us to discussion items. 12.1, acknowledge and file the Miners on Main program update. And Ms. News has that report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you this evening is one that was previously presented to you at your April 12th meeting by the Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class Number 14. The Miners on Main project was developed as an enhancement and educational opportunity to the downtown area by showcasing several significant historical figures from Placerville and the county's past. Supported by the Eldorado County Historical Society, the project team for Miners on Main has been working very hard to finalize the list of locations, historical figures, and medallions that will be installed as part of this virtual treasure hunt through our city's past. I'd like to introduce Mr. Gordon Helm, who is here to present the final project for your approval this evening, as well as we have here with us, we have Laurel Brentbaum from our Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Helm has some good information to share. Thanks for being here, Gordon.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will just kind of, I guess, re-update you on what we've done and where we're at with this, with this program. So how does this work? So I'm just going to do a quick review of the, you know, the concept, go over what the updates that we've done or what we've accomplished since we were last here and then kind of what the last steps or next steps are going to be. And then I'll take any questions on, on the overall program. What is the Miners on Main? It's a historical scavenger hunt designed to educate participants while being entertaining and have a positive economic impact to businesses on Main Street. Obviously, the intent is to get people down on Main Street, have them stay a little longer, interact with this game, play this game, spend more money at businesses while they're doing so, and hopefully have a positive impact both from, you know, the economic standpoint but also from the enjoyment standpoint of them being able to do this while they're down here. Progress update, the, I think when we last talked, I'd shown you a, I guess, a drawing of the signs that would go on either end of the, I guess, for lack of better words, playing field. This is what it looks like. And what it has is it has a barcode or a QR code in that lower right corner that will get people to go into the scavenger hunt. So when you, when you basically scan that code, it will get you to a webpage that looks similar to this. And depending on whether or not you're starting on the west end or on the east end, it'll give you instructions on how to proceed and where the first clue is to get your, to your next medallion or first medallion, depending on which direction you're coming from and how you're proceeding. We were also looking at putting together some paper stock cards that we would then give out to different businesses and the chamber would handle distributing those. It would look kind of something along the lines of this. We're still working on the final design of that. It's got some information on the front side of it and then it would have the clues on the backside so those people that don't have phones would be able to navigate from one medallion to the next, even though they may not, they wouldn't be able to get the details on the historical people that are represented on those ones, but at least we'll get the name and a little bit of information about who those are. The medallion itself, I think, well, did you just give those out? So that, that's what the medallions look like. They're about four inches in diameter. There will be another QR code inside of that little square that's there. When you take your phone and you hold it over the top of it, you'll get something that looks like that where it'll tell you what, you know, what the link is. And you can go ahead and click on that link and that will get you to the webpage that represents the, or provides the historical information on the miner that is being represented by that, that medallion. Let me see if there's anything else that, the miners, there were 10 miners that were discussed and were vetted by the Historical Society. That hasn't changed, so there's the list of the 10 there. As far as where the locations are, where they're going to be placed, this is a map of where the locations are. I don't know, can I link to the website or get to the internet if I do something here or not?
We experienced some technical difficulties with our.
Okay.
Equipment. I apologize, Gordon. You're doing a great job.
All right. Well, I'm basically, again, they're spread between Sacramento Street on the west and Clay Street on the east and they're on both sides of the street. They are going to be located on retaining walls, on a, on a stone mount, depending on who it is. Most, the majority will be on the sidewalk, up against the buildings or near, you know, tucked away so they're not actually in the walking path, but will be on the sidewalk so that those are, the majority of them are city-owned locations. There are a couple privately owned locations. One is Cascada Restaurant and the other one is Robinson's Drugs. And then the one other one is a county-owned building where the Chamber of Commerce is, where we're going to put one on the side of that or propose to put one on the side of that. Again, the boundary signs are on either side of the street. They're going to be located on, I think there's lamp posts that are on each, each end of the start and I guess the loop points. One lamp post or at Clay Street and then across the street in front of the Soda Works Building, there's a street sign there. So the other sign will be located there. Then coming back over to Sacramento Street, there's a lamp post that's there that will be that we're, one of these signs will be located. And then there's actually a flower pot that we're looking at putting a post into and then adding the sign to that that's right on the corner there of where the parking lot is at, on the, whether that be the north side of Main Street across from Sacramento Street. This is a sample again of what the, what the page would look like when somebody scans the QR code and will give you some historical information regarding the miner or the individual that, that medallion represents. And then obviously there would be a link there to get to the next clue to find where the next medallion would be. The next steps, I think, you know, we're here to get the final city approval. We've got a purchase order and pretty much have purchased, I think we've got 100 medallions. We have a couple extra of these signs and then I believe we've got 77 or so of the QR codes that can be used to replace the QR codes. We had a fundraising campaign, I guess, since we're here, I might as well quickly want to thank those that have contributed to that, that being Eldorado Disposal, Marshall Medical, the Eldorado Community Foundation, Parker Development, Dennis and Wendy Thomas, Michael Saragosa, Madron Tree Hill, and more have all contributed to this project and has made it so that we're able to get enough funding to do it. We're looking at trying to do the installation the week of the 10th if that works with everybody and then we'll have an official kickoff on November the 10th also, or on, on the 10th of November, assuming we can get that all coordinated. Any questions?
Questions for Gordon?
Yeah, I had a question. On the miners, are you going to change like those 10 miners every year so people can come through and look forward to doing a different scavenger hunt?
We hadn't planned on that, but it's definitely an option that can be done. I mean, that's the nice flexibility about having things on a webpage is that we can add it or change it and, you know, kind of change it around a little bit so it refreshes it. The other option that we've talked about and we just thought, you know, it's, it might be more of a phase two is to have some interactive videos where, you know, we actually have some kind of an actor or somebody get up and represent that, that miner or that individual and do some kind of a little talk about it. I'm going to talk to Andrew about this with his group when he does the Save the Graves thing because they do such a great job of that. And actually, one of his Save the Graves representatives this year is one of our miners, actually. It just happened to be a coincidence that it worked out that way. But it would be great to have, you know, some video clips or something like that so you can get a more interactive kind of experience going on with them. So the flexibility is there. It isn't in the funding or anything right now, so, but it's definitely the ability to make those changes exists.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd just like to say that I think this is a great project. I think it's a, it's fun for kids, it's fun.
I was going to say. It's a fun project.
Fun for, you know, history enthusiasts, for tourists, for, just for everyone. So, and it's a great way to promote downtown and to get people walking both sides of the street, up and down. I'm just, I'm really glad to see you take the initiative to come up with this on your own and do something that, that makes our community.
I got to give credit to the chamber and this leadership class is a great opportunity to do things like this for the community, so.
So Gordon, didn't, haven't some other cities done some, like a similar program, but it wasn't about, I mean, you chose miners, obviously.
Right. Greenville and when we did a study mission with the chamber to, I think it was Greenville in North Carolina, South Carolina, I don't remember which state, but one of those Carolina states, they had done what's called Mice on Main. And they had put bronze little mice and hidden them, tucked them around Main Street or whatever. And it really helped to revitalize their downtown because they were struggling because of the fact that the economy had changed so dramatically in that area with regards to the textile industries moving out of that area that they were trying to figure out ways to get people to come back downtown and get them to stay there and do things. And it, it had a great impact on that. Additionally, it had some impacts with regards to getting children to connect to the city and keeping those, those kids in the area when they became adults because they were tied to this game because they wanted their kids to play the game when, you know, when they had kids. So it built some community all the way around.
Well, I'm glad you took up the cause.
Thank you.
And I think the bronze medallions look very classy.
I do too.
And I think that the QR code is a really smart way to do it because it does give you tons of flexibility to update the content and, you know, grow the program or change out different historical figures and do video, you know, do anything that you might find would be helpful in the future. So thank you for presenting this. I will, if there's no questions for Gordon, then I'll open this item up to public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As an amateur historian, I find this to be an exciting idea, but I would urge the board to request enhancements. I like the medallion, having grown my beard since I retired, but half the miners eventually were women, so I hope eventually we can have additional medallions that memorialize the civilizing, quote from back then, influence of the women coming here. I also think that opening it up to the community, especially the high school students to do research and put forth nominations so that you have a list of people to consider for the future. And the beauty of these codes is that this particular list can be modified even before implementation. I have questions, why we have Charles E. Boyle, also known as Black Bark, why we are memorializing a criminal who had a minimal history in this area. Your original history had 11, which was the Miwok contribution. The natives contributed a lot in the initial labor and all of that. We're down to 10 and that's not there. Their names, we're doing Sheriff Hume, but we had Sheriff Rogers, who was famous. We had Deputy Staples, the first deputy killed in the line of duty. We had the first mayor, Alex Hunter, who also was instrumental in the fire department, many other aspects. We had a founding minister of the Black African Methodist Episcopal Church. There's so many different people out here and turning it over to the high school students to research it, create little blurbs, and then let the community decide who should the first 10. And this is just a pet peeve, but Lucy Stoddard Wakefield, if I have it right, is going to turn in her grave because she took advantage of the first law that allowed us to. allowed us to have women divorced and divorced her abusive husband. And then when they changed the law and allowed people to go to the name they wanted, she got rid of Wakefield. So I think at a minimum, we should recognize this awesome entrepreneur known for her pies, known for accumulating her own wealth when California allowed that because her dowry was under the control of her husband. I'm great that she's there, but historically, she's Lucy Stoddard, if I say it right. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Lael.
Sue Rodman, it sounds like fun to me. I hope we get our stagecoach driver too, that turned out actually to be a woman. When they found out, after she died, they found out, oh, she's actually a woman. So I hope that sometime they get a medallion for her too.
Thank you, Sue. Any other public comment? Don't be shy.
Just mentioned that I offered some reservations the first time this came up about the idea that the background, that there was a suggestion that had been run by the Historical Society because it was the name of one of the historians and her affiliation with Historical Society. It turned out that that was, her daughter was one of the members of this group that put it together. So it was like mother talking to daughter. But they did go through the Historical Society and they did a great job. I talked to Jill Kearney and she's great. As far as the woman that was just described, she wound up marrying one of the jurors who got her divorced and she took his name. So it's about choice and so she made her choice. So I don't know if it'll be successful or not. It doesn't matter. Give it a try. So I'm pleased they did. They did good work and the services the Historical Society provided they provide for anybody. You want to know about your family history, you know, give them a call. You want to know about what kind of wood was used by Snowshoe Thompson for his skis, go ask him. They'll give you answers. And so they did that and Gordon was very receptive to that. Yeah, I thought it was kind of trivializing history by putting it to a game, but I don't care if you put it on the back of a cereal box. If it's accurate, get it out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. All right, I'm going to close public comment on this item. You know, based on comments, there clearly is no lack of historical figures to recognize in this town, in this county. I'm perfectly fine with this election, but I think that there could definitely be a real opportunity to either add to the scavenger hunt, you know, over the years or to change out the content so that we can just continue educating people about all the different historical figures that we have. But thank you for this. Counsel, what would you like to do?
I'll move that we approve the program. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to item 12.2. This is to adopt a resolution approving a master lease agreement in order to facilitate lease equipment. And Mr. Warren has this staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Over the past several years, the city has entered into lease capital agreements to finance one or more larger pieces of equipment on an as-needed basis. In order to secure the new capital lease, staff has to take 10 steps as outlined in the staff report. If all goes well, this entire process takes approximately 90 days to complete. With each lease agreement, there's typically a $5,000 to $10,000 administration legal fee to cover the cost of preparing the lease documents. Over the past few years, staff has been exploring ways of reducing the cost and the amount of time it takes to procure and finance larger pieces of equipment. To that end, we work closely with the city's municipal advisor, Anna Sarabian, in developing a master lease program that could establish a line of credit with a reputable financial institution for the purchase of larger, purchasing larger pieces of equipment. With the proposed master lease agreement, staff would only need to take the 10 actions once every five years. When the city decides to finance additional pieces of equipment during the five-year period, that would be a three-step process and if all goes well, that would take about two to three weeks. The master lease agreement model could save the city a significant amount of time financing additional pieces of equipment. There would be a minimal cost for the preparation of the lease addendum. As discussed earlier, in your budget deliberations last year, staff recommended financing the replacement of both the Vectra truck and the CAD RMS hardware and software at the police department initially with the proposed master lease. The master lease would provide flexible terms of five to 20 years, depending on the useful life of the equipment. The initial interest rate would be established at the beginning of the lease and then with each addendum, it would be determined at that time. The, let's see, as far as the interest rate, most likely it would be indexed to a common index like SIFMA or SOFA. The agreement would allow for a maximum aggregate lease principal of about $2 million and that amount can be reduced if you want, but we thought that would be a good ceiling, if you will, over a five-year period. And if approved tonight, we will proceed in posting and distributing the RFP. Shortly after the RFP closes, we'll return to you with those proposals and further analysis. There will be some staff time and municipal advisor costs in administering the RFP and negotiating the master lease agreement. There may be administrative and legal fees associated with the preparation of the master lease. All of those costs could be included in the financing if you choose. The first year's estimate debt service for both the Vectra truck and the CAD RMS hardware and software project are included in this year's budget, so you're okay there. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Questions?
I have a question. Would you talk about the interest rate again? I didn't quite understand.
Sure. So, believe it or not, right now, if you're looking at mortgage rates, they're in the fives and sixes if you're lucky.
Correct.
Interest rates, right, actually about two or three weeks ago, they were in the threes, believe it or not.
I know.
And that's because it's for a capital lease and that's because it's a very reliable debt. So the banks see it as a secured debt. It's secured by both the equipment and city revenues. But each time, so you'll have the initial rate for the five-year lease and then if we add an addendum for additional equipment, that interest rate most likely, well, in this market, most likely be a little higher. Hopefully next year, a little lower. But it would be determined by an index, most likely. So they would look at the growth or decline of a particular index to determine what the interest rate should be. And we can either say, okay, that's great, or we could go back out to market if you wanted to. But we're trying to reduce the amount of time and effort and costs to finance equipment. This is.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if there was a cap on, you know, but if it's tied to the index, then I guess we don't have to.
It could. That's something we can negotiate. That's a good question. So we'll take a look at that.
Any other questions for Dave this time? All right, we'll go ahead and open this item up to public comment. If anyone would like to speak on 12.2, step on up to the podium. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Quick comment, this just, this seems like a really common sense step that the city can take to reduce paperwork and the time and the effort and staff time to procure equipment. So
I agree.
I think this is a good thing. I'm in favor of it.
I'll make a motion. We adopt the resolution approving the RFP as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Regina, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dave, thank you for doing all the legwork to make this happen. I think it's going to be a good savings of everything, effort, time, money for the city.
Thank you.
12.3. This is approving a professional service agreement with GHD for consulting services on the traffic impact mitigation fees. Ms. Neese has this staff report.
Thank you. The proposed item before you this evening is to approve a professional services agreement with GHD in support of the city's update to the traffic impact mitigation program. Section 66,000 of the government code requires that local agencies who adopt development fees mitigate, to mitigate or defray all or a portion of the costs of public facilities related to the development of a project be done in compliance with statutory limitations. This effort involves reevaluation of the program to ensure collected fees are directed towards specific capital improvement projects. Towards the end of 2021, state legislature also adopted Assembly Bill 602 that cites further additional requirements for development impact fee programs. As a result, the city will be updating the TIM Nexus study to identify levels of service for each facility and propose new levels of service as appropriate. If this study supports fee increases, the city will be required to review the assumptions of the study and evaluate the amount of the fees collected. And any Nexus studies adopted after July 1st of this year must also calculate a fee imposed on housing development project proportionate to the square footage of the proposed developed units. The city released a request for proposals in March of this year and received no proposals. Then staff evaluated the tasks again within the RFP and found an opportunity to bifurcate out some tasks that still allow the city to keep moving forward towards the goal of updating the TIM program. Such tasks included the travel demand model, technical memorandum, and fee reports for the past five years. The proposed contract before you this evening includes those selected items. Once the demand model is completed, staff will return to council with recommendations for completing the Nexus study. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions on this item? I've got a couple. So, let's see, let me find my scribble notes here. So it looks like we're going to be, part of, part of the scope of this work is looking at past methods for past studies. Why are we doing that? Was that not included in those past studies?
So we are, part of the effort is going to be go, you have to report out the past five years of collection. You have to report out the past five years of collection of the fees and actually present them and have them available publicly as well as on our annual financial reports. The other part of it too is we are, the technical memorandum will explain some of the derived assumptions and methodologies that were utilized in the last iteration of the program update. There was, it was at, it was done at a time where consideration towards economic impact were considered by council and the program as it was presented was moderately revised in light of those complications with the economy.
Okay.
So just to provide a little bit more context to that, the mitigation fee act, especially as revised, requires the city essentially conduct an audit on previous amounts that have been collected to demonstrate that they were used for the purpose for which the impact fees were collected. So that's half of the report. And then the other half is to ensure that the study actually supports the amount that we're collecting. And so if you see, for example, a significant hike, you need to demonstrate, is it because of inflation? Is it because previous economic impacts resulted in the city subsidizing a portion of it? So that'll all be explained in that study and we need to do it publicly before it's adopted.
Okay. Thank you. And Rebecca, can you just kind of tell me a little bit more about the process for updating our TIM fees? So we're going to, we're going to spend $290,000 on this study. And then when will there be an opportunity to look into like the project list that ultimately determines what the?
So just to actually clarify and set council's expectations in alignment with reality, these types of studies cost about half a million dollars. So when this, when the RFP was released, the reason why we didn't get any proposals, there was a couple of reasons we heard. Number one was it was just the workload bandwidth wasn't available for consultants. And the other was the enormity of the study and that at that time, when the consultants had researched how much had been set aside for it, they didn't really have a conversation with us, but they just kind of assumed that that was all we had. And at the time, we had budgeted about $100,000 essentially as a placeholder. And going forward, you know, in order to determine your update to your traffic impact mitigation, you have to actually understand the traffic impacts and that comes along with development of the travel demand model, as well as not only supporting, you know, the scope recommends level of service, but also compliance with SB 743, which is the vehicle miles traveled, you know, assessment of traffic impacts to an area. The county went through a fairly recent travel demand model update and although there is some information from that, that we're able to glean from that and put into our travel demand model, we're actually a little bit of a unique situation because they are truly rural in terms of their travel demand model development. We are more urbanized. They look at the travel, travel and traffic volume impacts on individual roads. We assess the engagement at intersections more than anything else. So it's actually kind of a different beast in terms of travel demand model development. The next step from that is, once we actually kind of see where the volumes are coming in at, we will compare it to the last iteration of our traffic model and see, you know, not only do we assess it with that, we actually assess it with planned land uses and how we move forward in terms of planned developments that have yet to come to fruition, as well as considering developments that have occurred since the last update to the program too. From that, we look at what our true infrastructure needs are as far as our circulation and road network throughout town to support our community, not only just for commercial and access and residential access, but also just as a overall fluidity. From there, we develop a set of projects and we have some projects already in mind. We have a list of projects in our adopted TIM fee program. We have been working on that list. And so, you know, and the council at their discretion and through justification could always add projects to that list and it has been done on the occasion in the past.
Or remove.
Or remove. Correct. So there are a couple of projects that we have on our current list that, yeah, we are considering removing because they're no longer necessary or they were, a whole host of reasons added to the program that maybe have since gone away. But there are other opportunities to add in other projects that might serve our community and our circulation a little bit better.
Okay.
So the next step after the model is we start looking at what our needs are currently as well as with planned development into the future. We develop our projects. We assess them based on an engineer's estimate and find out the valuation. And then from there, a fee is calculated on a prorated share and that becomes our, you know, essentially like a rate study or a fee study for that.
Okay, so in addition to the $290,000 for this study, you're saying that there's another study that's going to be half a million?
No, it will probably be about another 250.
Okay.
So total would be about half a million.
And is there funding grants available to municipalities to do this work?
We're actually looking at a couple of opportunities through, there's a recent state grant. I was actually just talking about it with Woodrow Delory about a week ago. There are some opportunities where we could possibly fund portions of this study. We are looking at what those options are. You know, the issue is, it's kind of like, you don't want to, you know, it's not really a reimbursement thing. You can't, you know, you need to kind of ask for permission before you get the money. So even if we, if we pay for the travel demand model right now, there's still some mitigation components of the study that could be funded by an outside funding source and we are going to be exploring that.
Okay.
Yeah, you may have noticed, you know, kind of speaking to what James Corliss touched on earlier, is that we're not really in a capacity increasing environment anymore.
Right.
Which is ironic just because our population is growing. However, However, we are more, we're getting more focused on trying to change habits into selecting alternative modes of transportation, i.e. transit, walking, biking, and making our communities in such a smart, planned way that we can support that effort, too. So there are some mitigation fees that we could look at and consider as part of the traffic impact mitigation that actually supports active transportation programs such as biking, walking trails.
Okay. Great. Sure. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will open this up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on item 12.3. Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Make a motion. We approve. The resolution is presented by staff. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, I would be interested in seeing the list of projects that were currently used to calculate our TIM fees.
I was thinking the same thing.
Send the link out to?
Sure.
Yeah, I believe they're available online, but I will double check, and at least, at the very least, I'll send out a link to council for that.
Okay, sure, thank you. All right, moving on to item 13. This is council reports from other agency meetings. Alderato County Transit Authority.
We haven't met since the last meeting.
Okay, Alderato County Transportation Commission. We will meet next week. LAPCO?
Meets tomorrow.
Okay. CECOG?
We met, I think it was anything that, no, the only, well, the one interesting thing, we had a pretty long presentation from another MPO in Colorado, and it was just talking about, I know James talked about the triple bottom line of equity, economy, environment, and their MPO had gone through the same process probably a few years before us. It was just really getting lessons learned, and they had this kind of the same makeup of rural, urban, suburban, urban, and so just how those things work together and how you don't leave parts of the community behind with that triple bottom line. So that was a, it was a really good presentation for me to get a better understanding of the triple bottom line.
All right, thank you. Pioneer Community Energy Board. Councilmember Thomas is the one that sits on this board, and he's not here tonight, so we will skip that. Placerville Fire Save Council.
No report.
County Two by Two, County City Two by Two, we have not met, and opportunity next.
There was some information on some funding that was going to go out. If I remember the specifics on that, and then we didn't really talk at all about the, the information had not come out yet about the new navigation center, so it was sort of tabled until the next meeting. So I'm sure we'll have more discussion about what role EDOC may be playing and the funding once, now that the proposal's out there.
Okay, great. I will open item 13 up to the public. If anyone would like to comment on council member reports from other agencies. Seeing none, I will close public comment on that and move to item 14, requests for future agenda items. None. Okay, item 15, this is the city manager and staff reports. 15.1 is the police monthly stats. Chief Friend, this is a receiving file, but would you like to highlight anything for the community?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, yes. First of all, an apology that you're getting the August stats at the end of September. I've canceled all of Shirley's future vacation plans, so that shouldn't happen anymore. Highlighting some of the things in the, in the report, you'll see that under our Part 1 crimes, we did record a homicide in August. That was a very tragic event for everybody involved, to include our officers and specifically the family. It was a murder-suicide, and there is no further information that I can share right now. The case is still pending to finish it up. I would like to highlight some of the efforts of the Crime Reduction Unit. We're going to eventually incorporate those numbers into this form. We just don't know how to do it yet without turning this thing into an addition of War and Peace because it'll be, it'll be thick. They've been busy. Specifically, they've worked with county probation on conducting probation searches within the city. That was a successful operation. Many of the probationers were in compliance. However, five were not, and at that time, they were taken into custody for probation violations. We also worked with the state alcohol beverage control agents, conducting shoulder tap operations within the city. That was a successful operation. It was a day-long where we use underage decoy to attempt to buy directly from the establishments and to solicit patrons of those establishments to buy for us. So good operation. As far as the homeless outreach efforts, the teams specifically conducted multiple operations on Quartz Mountain. That's that area behind the senior center off there off Spring Street. They, it's private property. Let me say that, first of all, because we've heard about us trying to push people off public property. We're aware of Boise. We read it frequently. During those operations, 16 people were contacted. Out of that, seven were issued citations and two were arrested. This was a week-long operation, so those citations and arrests occurred throughout that week. At the conclusion of the operations, all persons have been removed from that private property. We're continuing to work with the private property owner to ensure that things are in place to prevent folks from continuing to go up and frequent that area. That was the area that caused me most, the most concern for risk of fire issues. I know we hear a lot from Broadway, and Broadway's a danger, but Broadway's been masticated for the most part at the lower level. Quartz Mountain has not, and if you remember last year, we had that fire that could have gotten away from us.
National night out.
Yeah. So good job for the team. Placerville Extension Bridge. There near the waterway, two persons were contacted. One was arrested. Since then, nobody's repopulated that area. The wood area behind Office Max, which again is private property, two persons were contacted, no arrests or citations, and the issue was abated. Ray Lawyer Drive behind Verizon, one person was contacted and a citation was issued. The walking trail, we received information that there were two tents. One person was contacted. Turns out that that person was an adult female who was pregnant, so the team worked with her and outreach efforts and actually got her removed from a homeless situation and placed in a home where she can be safe and have her baby. And Broadway, we've contacted 28 campers up there, which kind of was a shock to me because during previous walks up there, there were a lot more than 28. What we found out is that a lot of the transients believed that something was coming on behalf of enforcement, so they've displaced from that area. We've contacted a total of 28 persons up there. Thirteen were female, 15 were male. One was a married couple. Four people were over the age of 60, and two were veterans. Again, we continue to work with them, providing resources. Many of them whom are already in the system have been contacted and kind of started that whole intake process for resources, and for whatever reason, they just decided not to continue with that process. So we do enforce law violations up on Broadway. We will make arrests. We have made arrests for narcotics, other issues. We've enforced our city ordinance on basically the blight, the leaving the garbage out, stuff like that. What we found is that one person would occupy a camp, but then they would have two or three tents set up to store their stuff or store random stuff or treat it like a three-bedroom apartment or something. It was just, so one person can create a huge footprint of essentially blight. So we're trying to work with that population to bring that back into a little bit more control. And we're just waiting to see what happens with the navigation center once that opens up. So they've been busy. Thank you to the council. This is a direct result of you authorizing the extra person to put in that team and give them the direction and resources they need to go out there and actually do what we want them to do, which is make it a safer community. So, any questions?
Lots of good things to report, lots of, lots of activity that the police department's undergoing right now.
My only question was, I read an article in the Mountain Democrat about two e-bikes that were stolen up in Camino and found down in that camp. Do you have any more information on that?
So, yeah, apparently the initial crime occurred in the county. We were never notified about it. Apparently, they didn't call the sheriff's office. They had, Apple tagged their bikes with GPS locator, and it took them to that location. They said they went by the police department, but we were closed. We never close. We're a 24-hour operation, so I don't know what happened there. But we got notified after it became a big melee, so we got there and tried to piece it back together. We're sorry that the incident occurred to these folks, but we don't want people to take it upon their own initiative to go after and try to recover their property. They pay us to do that. We'll go do it for you. Don't even have to get dirty. Scenarios like that are very difficult for us to reach a solution that's happy for the party. What it is, is it gets in there, it gets all messed up, and we show up and they give us ground beef and demand we make them a turkey dinner. It's like, you can't do that. This is messed up at this point. So we're not sure the district attorney's office is going to file the original theft report because we don't know if those people actually stole the bike.
That was more my question. It seems like there's probably another third party involved.
Yeah, it's a weird, the whole thing is a weird story. Even our police report, when we're trying to piece it together, I had to go back and watch some of the body worn on it, and it just, there was a lot of things that didn't make sense. But we'll take the report. We'll investigate it and hopefully find, you know, a resolution that they're happy with.
Yeah, I just know, it seems like there are a lot of stolen bikes in the area, and just hoping that we can maybe, when we have cases, do something about it to piece together what's going on.
Yeah, so they would have needed to contact the sheriff's office to start it that because that's where that theft actually occurred, was up in Apple Hill, I believe. We offered to take the initial report. I think by that time, they just wanted to get their stuff and get out of town. So it, just some, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to talk bad to the victims. I hate that somebody went and ripped them off. It makes, it makes me mad. But it just became difficult for us to try to piece things back together after it already got kind of screwed up.
Thank you.
We did recover one bike, though.
Some friends of mine got their bike stolen in Placerville.
Interviewed him, and, yeah, he's in jail, so.
And the PD recovered it?
And those were electric bikes. Those are expensive bikes.
Those were, yes. And the bike that the mayor's referring to was a very expensive bike.
So, you know, just for the community to know, it's always good to take your, down your bike identification numbers and
Absolutely.
lock garages, put a lock on it.
We get a lot of those where people report the theft of a bike, but they don't know the serial number, and then they're upset. We don't, we can't tell whose bike is who. If we had the number, then we can.
Because it was black and had two wheels and?
Yeah, and, yeah, handlebar, yeah.
Chief, on the 290 registrants, are they, do we, do we have a sense? I mean, are they, are they living up on Broadway? Are they just sort of all over the place? Do we have a sense of where they're at? We know they're transient, but.
Yeah, the 18 that we list as being transient, or they are on Broadway. Some of them are couch surfing. So when they don't have the permanent resident like that, they're required to register as a transient, even though they may not be in the dirt transient, so.
And are any of those GPS monitored, or are these all non-GPST 290s?
I don't believe they're, I don't believe they're GPS. The last GPS we dealt with was somebody coming out of the prison system on a violent felony, not 290-related, though.
This is like the high-risk sex offenders, HRSOs?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we have any. I can check on that. That's a good thing to know about, and I can, I'll report out on that during the next stats.
Thank you.
Make sure we highlight.
So transients have to register?
Yeah, they have to register more frequently.
290?
290s. Sexual assault.
Okay, but not all, okay.
No, no.
The way you said it, really?
No. We'd be busy.
Got it.
All right, I'll go ahead and open this up to the public. If anyone has any questions or comments for the chief. All right, I see none. Thank you, Chief Friend, and thank your officers for the good work that they're doing, keeping crime down and being proactive. Good to see. Item 15.2, this is receive and file an update on the US 50 Quarter Action Plan, Trip to Green. And our city engineer has this report.
Thank you. So, you know, as we are approaching this next weekend, it's our final Trip to Green weekend. It came and went, much to our joy and soon sorrow. But I just really wanted to thank you for allowing me an opportunity to present to you on this item a summary of on the past weekends, as well as kind of a look ahead into this next weekend, which is going to be on October 1st and 2nd. So I have to say, I've had the blessing and privilege of being present in the field for every day of this project, and just some general observations from staff and the project field team. You know, one thing that really kind of surprised us pleasantly was the amount of out-of-state license plates that we actually saw in town. So that was actually nice. We saw one from Pennsylvania, Oregon, lots of Nevada, Arizona. And we definitely had a lot of folks in and around town that were from out of town, so that was really pleasant. Broadway flowed smoothly. You know, no backups were observed, and we received a lot of positive comments from businesses and residents located on and off Broadway and Main Street. Just, I actually got a very nice note dropped off at City Hall yesterday by a gentleman that lives up in Escaton, and from his note, it just said, you know, "Traffic gets so bad, especially Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoons. The freeway gets backed up, and then people try to cut through Main Street and Broadway and jam up the whole area." So one question we've been getting a lot on this project, you know, is who are you doing this for? Is it for the out-of-towners? Well, no, it's for the people in our community. And so it was just really, you know, nice to kind of get that feedback, too, because, you know, we do see the immediate feedback out in the field, but getting that direct feedback is nice. And then the other thing, too, I really wanted to highlight, you know, as a general overview of what we've observed the last couple of weekends, is, you know, enforcement has been paramount in getting this to work. If we do not have people obeying the posted speed limit, it becomes a pretty decent safety concern. You know, we have heartbeats on the highway for 14-plus hours a day, and we want them to make it home to their spouses and their children. And, you know, the funny thing about enforcement is it's effective. So even the Tuesday after Labor Day, I witnessed coming through town that folks were still slowing down to 40 miles per hour as they were approaching town, so that was really nice. I also have the blessing and privilege of being able to get every single accident report that our city prepares, courtesy of our wonderful police department. And so I did go through the last three years of accident reports this week, and 56% of the accidents that occur on US 50 are related to speeding. And the other 44% are a combination related to unsafe lane changes, red light runners, and we even had one vehicle and pedestrian collision incident at Spring Street. So it really just, you know, that's just the accidents that get routed and reported. That doesn't include accidents and fender benders that are civilly handled incidents that don't require a tow or support or anything from PD or CHP. So, you know, a couple of things for us to just, you know, kind of take away from these. And this is very much a global overview, and I'm happy to go through some of the, you know, finer details of the report, too. You know, we were able to collect some very helpful traffic data from Caltrans observing, you know, that, you know, definitely some timeframes of the day benefited more than others. You know, and another question that we get is, well, why are you doing it from 8:00 to 8:00? Why is it so long? And then other questions we get is, is it really starting at 8:00? You know, just kind of a scope of work understanding. It takes, it takes about 45 minutes to an hour to place the 220 cones, signs, flaggers, and barricades that need to go in place on the side streets to support the trip to green. So it takes, you know, the contractor we hired, Veer Camp, they're very, very fast. And the fact that they keep fine tuning it every single weekend and they get faster and faster is impressive, but that's still a huge amount of traffic control, and I would say any other contractor would probably take about two hours to set up. So it does take some time to set up, and then the question of why does it go from 8:00 to 8:00? It shouldn't need to go that long. It shouldn't need to go that long. I go back to the fact that we have heartbeats on the highway. You don't want to be setting up traffic control, um, when you have congestion in a busy highway because you're already, you're already late to the game at that point. Um, and then the other part of it is, you know, we all are so busy, there's so many things for us to think on and, um, you know, be reminded of, that we had to come up with something that would be easy for us to figure out and remember as members of the public. And 8:00 to 8:00 or 7:00 to 7:00 is an easy time to remember. Now, does that mean that we go until 8:00? No. Um, we do, we do pick up early when we see that traffic is light and this week, this coming weekend, I could see us picking up even a little earlier than we had before because, uh, the sun's down already. So, um, it'll be, you know, we, we definitely sit out there and observe how traffic is behaving and, um, our Caltrans partners are phenomenal. They show up and they stay with us in the area the entire time. They are quick to respond and, and wait for us to, and it's very, it's a very methodical, very synchronized setup and just, uh, really impressed with how well the team works together. Um, but, so some questions then, moving forward is, you know, um, you know, we've, you may have noticed even over the last Trip to Green weekend, we do change, uh, some of our messaging and even some of our signage and, you know, we are fine tuning this. This is the entire intent of the pilot project, right, was to figure out what's working and what doesn't and fine tune as needed. So, we actually changed some of our messaging. I touched on the setup timeframe, how long it takes and why we do what we do. And, uh, the other, uh, question is, what does it look like moving forward, right? We're looking ahead to the next weekend, but we all, we're always looking forward. So, you know, there's kind of a lot of assumptions about the pilot project that in, the intention of it is to justify a flyover. Um, what if it was actually to do the opposite? What if it was actually to find a solution that didn't include $300 million in concrete through our town? So, if this is something that we could get to be a sustainable program and a project, maybe we can consider it. And we understand, you know, the other thing, too, is we really understand, too, that this is not everybody's cup of tea and that's okay. You know, um, folks have, uh, voiced some frustrations and, you know, maybe we look at it as, you know, an emergency, um, you know, approach to traffic congestion if we need it. Um, you know, we really want to be, uh, understanding of the community's needs, but, you know, one thing that I have to say is, you know, a critical part of being a fire, resilient community means that the firefighters have to be able to get to the location of the fire in a timely manner. And we already saw, uh, one particular incident where Trip to Green benefited our local firefighters in accessing a fire here in town quickly. So, um, you know, just, you know, we have to stay nimble in our options. Um, we do read every comment, uh, we appreciate the positive feedback and we listen and stay inquisitive on the constructive criticisms and we will continue to do that. We are in the process of developing a survey that will be released after this coming weekend. Um, and we're actually going to be developing a survey, uh, not only for the community, but also specific to merchants, to see the impacts and how we can help mitigate some of those impacts in the future, what we could do differently or better. Um, let's see. Uh, we are still receiving, um, some good comments, uh, you know, throughout, um, yeah, I mentioned the one comment that we had dropped off yesterday at Town Hall, or at City Hall, but we also get, uh, direct comments in the field. And, you know, we included some, uh, additional information and graphs that we received from the, um, Caltrans system and, uh, kind of seeing, you can see exactly where the spike in congestion normally occurs, um, you know, included in staff's report. The orange line, which is a spike, shows the congestion and the backup that normally happens when we don't have a Trip to Green weekend. That blue flat line is a constant flow through town. There is no backup, there is no congestion. Uh, one, uh, other cool, um, point, uh, for this next weekend is we are, we are going to fly, we are going to do a, um, the county, uh, surveyor's office, um, is doing a drone flyover of the entire project area, not only this weekend, but then again on the weekend of October 15th and 16th for comparisons for a Trip to Green weekend and non-Trip to Green weekend. And luckily with the mosquito fire being put out, um, we're really hopeful that, uh, Apple Hill kind of returns back to business as normal for, for their sake and for everybody's, really, so. Um, uh, if you had any specific questions, and, you know, I've kind of talked about the technicalities of the project, uh, throughout this whole process, but, um, if there's anything specific you have questions on or comments.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, did we have any incidents where the fire department had to trip the lights?
Yeah, we did. We had, uh, preemptions. Um, I think the first weekend was like 18 preemptions and then this last weekend was right around, it was a little bit more, it was right around 25 or 26, I think.
And it all went well?
Yeah. We even had, uh, a miscommunication on our field crew's part and there was, um, where canal, you know, is, is technically closed, but we leave the preemption available. And, uh, it was a little clunky, but we got them through with that, too, and appreciated the grace of, uh, of Chief Cordero's staff on that and it was, uh, they were great to work with, so.
And I, I just had one comment.
Sure.
Another comment. Um, again, I think, I don't know, the gods were against us again, because I don't think it's going to show a true, um, because of the heat. And I, I just think that it, the heat that happened, that it was so hot, I mean, there's no way in, that I would want to come down and go shopping at a, in 105-degree weather. So, I'm afraid that it's going to be blamed on this, you know, that maybe there was less business or whatever. Again, I don't think it was a true, and I'm not too sure how many people decided to not go to Tahoe or go camping or whatever because of that severe heat. I, I don't know. What do you think?
Well, so funny thing is, you know, I mentioned I was here throughout, uh, the duration, so, uh, it was, it actually got up to 114, uh, that weekend. And so, I was downtown, I had lunch at Old Town Grill.
I felt so bad for you guys out there.
And, uh, and, but the thing that I actually noticed, you know, I was, uh, keeping in contact with City Manager Morris, um, about it, but there's actually a lot of foot traffic on Main Street. I mean, I was out heading for, you know, to grab lunch around 11:30 and it was, you know, there was, um, a couple of gals in Lighthouse that were shopping, that were coming through town on their way back to Sacramento from Tahoe. Uh, there was lots of locals, um, out and about enjoying, there was a lot of foot traffic.
And I agree, some people, but I just think it would have, there would have been more.
It, it, yeah, it would have been more. Um, I do agree with that towards the latter part of the day. Definitely, uh, got very vacant, but, but it was, I mean, you know, during a more cooler, more pleasant part of the day, it was, uh, very nice. And then, um, what was the other comment that I wanted to touch on? Um, as far as, you mentioned the heat and then, uh, you had another comment, sorry, I just had it and I just missed it.
No, I, I just ask about the, uh, we had to use, the fire department had to use the lights.
Yes, okay, yeah, that one was good.
That was the only thing.
So, but yeah, it was, it was, I mean, folks shopping.
And then I, and I also said that maybe it, it kept a few people from going camping or going.
Thank you, yes. So, actually, we found that to not be the case. Um, the funny part is when, people are creatures of habit, so we actually had our spike come through town around 10:00 AM. It got really busy on Monday around 10:00 AM. And it's because people, when they go camping, they're like, we better get up, it's time to pack up, we gotta get through Placerville, you know?
Well, and it's probably thinking it's going to get cooler up here, too.
Right. So, they, I mean, but we did see a ton of trailers coming by. Um, I actually got, uh, several members of the team, too, actually, got text messages from folks coming through that live in Cameron Park, coming back from camping. Oh, my gosh, this is amazing. This makes me actually, you know, want, like, I, I wish we could have stopped, we had the trailer with us, you know, and things like that, which, don't worry, we're finding a spot for trailer parking in the future. Um, but, uh, you know, we did see a spike come through, um, mid-morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, last year we had the Caldoor Fire, the year before we had, uh, COVID, so I don't feel like we've had a normal couple of years.
Yeah.
Because I remember when I can't move on Main Street.
Oh, yeah.
Where we have the streets gridlocked and I think people forget how bad that really is. And I haven't forgotten how bad that really is. So, when we're talking about, are we doing it for the visitors or the, the freeway people? No, we're doing it so we can move in our own town.
Yeah.
And God forbid something should happen that we could actually get out and, and go if we needed to.
Well, exactly. You know, I, I was just going to say the same thing. I mean, I, I did my test, took me 26 minutes.
Did you do your test?
To go from, you know, uh, Upper Broadway over to my house. I mean, it, it was, you didn't move. And I, I do think things have been different the last couple of years and, and you're exactly right. Um, it's, it's, we did this because we had people on Clay Street, we had people on Locust, we had people all over the place that were clogging up our, our tiny streets, uh, using, yeah, airport, yeah, going around the, on both sides of, of Placerville. And, and that was a big reason for doing this was neighbors were complaining, saying, what are we doing with all this traffic and people that are going on our streets, uh, using Waze and Google Maps and different things? And so, you know, the reality is we can't have our cake and eat it. Uh, it just doesn't work. So, there's always going to be, as Rebecca said, there's going to be some people, it's not their cup of tea. Uh, we're looking for solutions and for ways to make things better for our residents, for our visitors, and for our public safety. And I think, you know, that's what this project is all about. I do think that this weekend will hopefully give us a better atmosphere in terms of weather and everything else, that will be a more normal weekend, uh, for folks maybe going up to Apple Hill. But, yeah, we're still in a weird flux of a time that we may not know for a while and we may, you know, look at doing something like this again, um, because it was. I mean, I was out there, I stopped to talk to Rebecca for a little while and it was well over 100 degrees and, yeah, I don't want to be walking around Main Street when it's that hot or I may jump into a store real fast to get something, but I'm not going to be, um, moseying around. There wasn't a lot of, I, you know, I, I saw less people there in the afternoon. In the morning, I, I missed it, so there may have been more folks, but, um, again, you're exactly right. It's like, we did this, I mean, we had tons of community folks coming out. I mean, Clay Street was a huge issue, um, and, and that was not the only genesis, because this has been going on for a long time, but, uh, certainly the impacts on our neighborhoods, which we haven't seen because of COVID and fires and other things over the last couple of years. So, everyone, remember.
I, I think that these October weekends will be a good reminder to folks about what the traffic looks like on the non-Trip to Green, um, because Apple Hill is just, is just about to get going, um, and the weather, you know, the, the mosquito fires, fortunately and thank you firefighters, is, seems to be under control, um, and the smoke is way down. Um, so, the weather is looking good. I think that it's going to be a really busy Apple Hill season, so, um, this next weekend will be great, um, for residents. And then every weekend afterwards, they'll be saying, why couldn't they do Trip to Green all October? Um, couple of questions. I know that there's going to be drone footage and I'm really looking forward to seeing that. Is that going to be, so there's going to be a control day and a, and a Trip to Green day? Is that going to be this weekend for the Trip to Green Day and, and then another weekend in October for the control day?
Yes, yeah, so we're doing, uh, a flyover of it, uh, this weekend and then our control weekend is, uh, October 15th, 16th.
Okay.
And then, I apologize, one thing I forgot to daylight, too, uh, Councilmember Saragosa mentioned, um, Waze. Waze did a great job of directing folks in and around our detours to get back on the freeway.
Really?
Yeah. I was actually really impressed. Uh, we took screenshots of everything, you know, and I took screenshots of Waze on a busy weekend, uh, earlier this summer, which was, uh, the weekend of August 27th. And it was 8 miles an hour. That's how fast you could get through town. That was it. And then I took screenshots of Waze during Labor Day weekend and it was green, it was, you know, I mean, on Waze, it shows red gridlock on the other weekend and on a Trip to Green weekend, it was green. So, it was really nice. And the other thing, too, that I really loved, is that it didn't direct traffic down Broadway and Airport Road and every which way, but loose. So, that was nice.
The biggest benefit.
Yeah.
You know, one thing that I don't, I, I try to monitor social media comments as little as humanly possible, but one thing, one thing I have heard, a comment is that, you know, should the city want to do this going forward? We don't have the money for it. And I, I, this is kind of a funny comment because no city has the money for something until they actually decide to do it and apply for funds. So, just so the community knows, um, there's no reason to think that there wouldn't be money to do a project like this, but it does bring up, you know, one point that I think is kind of on people's minds is clearly is expensive to set up and take down and there's a lot of manpower involved and a lot of cones. If this was, we were able to turn it into a more permanent solution, are there ways to, you know, make it so that setup was easier, automatic, things like that?
Yes.
Reduce the cost.
So, the funny thing about patience and time, um, is technology had a chance to catch up to some ideas. We have a lot more in place than we did 30, 40 years ago when we looked at other solutions for this. You know, we kind of, it was, um, you know, your options back in the day were a flyover or depress freeway or take it or leave it, you know, that was it. Uh, the, now, as we've moved forward, you know, we've, you know, there's been so many advances in terms of traffic management, hydraulic bollards, uh, that can resist being hit by a Mack truck. And, you know, there's all kinds of opportunities with doing a project where we could implement something like that, you know, where, it always makes us a little nervous when there's events on Main Street, um, because of, uh, you know, the potential, um, exposure for safety in that, uh, for vehicular, an errant vehicle. And there are options, if we do a project in and around downtown, that we could include additional safety features that could protect Main Street for events. And, you know, it's always, we're, you know, we, as far as, uh, to your comment on funding, I gotta say, as a small agency and with the, you know, the blessing of having El Dorado County Transportation Commission and SECOG and partners at Caltrans, we're quite scrappy at finding money. Um, so, if it comes down to a situation where we find something, if the political will is behind it to find a solution and get us towards, um, a project like that, we will get scrappy and we will find the money. I mean, you know, we always joke around on the third floor that we're, it's time to have another bake sale or how many, how many quarters do we have in the sock drawer, you know? But, uh, but in all seriousness, we could find a way.
I, I agree. I, I think we definitely punch above our weight for getting funding for projects for the community, so. Um, well, thank you, Rebecca, for all your hard work on this and your department's work. And thank you, Woody, um, and your staff at EDCTC for facilitating this, this project. I know it's been just so much for everybody, but I think it's, I think it's going to really pay off and be something that we can use to begin to solve some major problems for the community. Um, so, that's, I'm.
And I earlier mentioned my 16 years, but when Woody first came on and before Woody, the, we, I've talked to them about trying to do something and it's been years and years and years and we finally, finally found the, the solution right now. I, I think there's going to be more to come, but for right now, it's great.
Yeah, Woody and his staff are truly a blessing to us.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
All right, I'd like to open this up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on Trip to Green, item 15.2, please step up to the podium.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to state for the record that the city received written communication from Nicole Gottberg on this item.
Okay, thank you.
I just came forward, just came forward because of Councilmember Morelli concerned that maybe merchants were blaming the poor turnout of business on the traffic, but that's not the case. Every merchant I heard from acknowledged that the heat was a big factor, so it wasn't possible to tell how much was related to the traffic. There was a meeting of merchants downtown and that topic was raised and everyone conceded. It's just like bass fishing. The bass don't strike when the water's hot or cold and that's true for, for business on Main Street. when the water's hot or cold. And that's true for, for business on Main Street. And it's just like what Rebecca said in the very beginning, it's, it's going to be, you know, a work in progress. You're going to work along the kinks along the way. I just wish that somebody would do some marketing to promote Placerville as a destination point. Because if you're coming down from Lake Tahoe or Apple Hill, it's a long drive all the way to Sacramento or San Francisco. So why not make a diversion to look at the art galleries and the great restaurants we have? So it would be really helpful if we worked towards that. But again, it's going to be taking time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Nicole Gottberg, Placerville resident. I just had a question. I know I put this in writing. But one of the pieces of data I'd kind of like to see is what our priority one call response times are on the weekends when this is running versus the weekends when it's not. I think it should improve them or stay the same. But I know that's a question that I've gotten from folks. And I think when we're looking at it as from a city, you know, is this improving the safety for our residents? Is it improving the quality of life? And I think it's definitely doing what it's intended to do. It's improving traffic congestion. But I'd sort of like to see those other pieces. I know we talk a lot about the economic impacts, but I'd really like to see data associated with the safety impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Woody Deloria, El Dorado County Transportation, Transportation Commission. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Mayor Taylor. Thank you for the kind words. I just want to thank your staff, Rebecca Neves, Melissa McConnell, all the, all the staff, Chief Ren, Chief Cordero, for their support of this, this pilot project. And it is just that, a proof of concept, a pilot project that we, that, you know, we collectively stood up, not knowing if it was going to be successful or not. And so far, it has been, I think, successful. And success may not be that we decide to do this ultimately in the future, but we are testing this concept and it's, you know, so far proving to be, be a positive impact. Want to just address a couple of comments regarding looking at past years when we had more traffic. So Caltrans does have traffic counters on Highway 50, they have for, for decades. So we will be looking at not only the, this year, the traffic counts from this year, but past years, including during, during the coronavirus, when we saw a huge influx in traffic last year during the, the Caldo Fire, when we saw a decrease. But we can look at the past 10 years of traffic and compare, you know, this year to those, those kind of, an average of those past years, combined with things like, like sales tax generation in the city, to see if, you know, the, the, the traffic counts on Highway 50 were higher than normal, or were lower, lower than normal, and compare that to the sales tax generation in, in town to see if, you know, it did impact, or what, what impacted the, the merchants on Main Street. So there's a lot of data behind the scenes that, you know, engineers and people that are far smarter than I am can, can kind of extrapolate and figure out what the, what the impacts of trip to green really will be. And, and just help us decide if we want to do that in the future. So again, in the interest of, of time, I just want to appreciate Rebecca and her team and, and, you know, your city manager and, and your leadership for this, for this pilot project. So thank you.
Thank you, Woody. Couple, a couple of questions that came up. Chief Cordero, Chief Ren, do you have any information about call times from trip to green weekends versus non?
I can tell you that from speaking with the crews, they were very pleased with the efficiency they had to maneuver through town. To actually put that into hard data, that would be difficult for us, just because you would need a comparison from, you know, engine 25 leaving quarters, going to X residence or location to get those comparisons on the weekends. We can take a look and see if they're there, but the response and feedback was very positive.
Okay, thanks. Chief Ren, you have any information on this?
That's a, you know, that's a great question. Thank you, Nicole, for bringing that up. And, and we heard about it a while back, so we took a look at it. For us, there's really not a significant difference in our, our priority one response unless we're tied up on 50 for traffic collisions and stuff like that. Because we work out of a beat system and our officers are in geographical areas of the town, they're able to quickly respond. They know the areas to stay away from during the impacted weekends, Broadway and 50. So there's not enough there to really say that there's a significant impact. But we'll continue to look at that. And if there is something that pops, we'll share that with Rebecca. I'm sure you'd want that for some of your data collection points. So, and we're driving smaller cars too. I mean, the fire department's got a heck of a time trying to get through, through town.
Yeah.
When it's impacted.
Okay. Thank you. And then in terms of marketing town, we do have a contract with the Chamber that's marketing the three different business sectors in Placerville. And I think that they're doing a great job so far. So that's something that we can continue working on. 15.3, Click to Gov, online bill pay software.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the council. As you know, this is a long time coming project. And we're really excited to finally roll it out. We've been beta testing the program for about three weeks. And so far, so good. So there are a few bugs we found, but we're working through those. And we appreciate the community's patience. But to kind of go back, when you're on the city's webpage, if you go under Government and down to Finance and then Utility Billing, there's a section called Online Payment Service. And if you want to pay online, you just click here. And this is your Click to Gov software. Just a few items of functionality. You can see up top, accessibility for low graphics for those that need that. You can get support by hitting Contact Us through email. New user would be to actually establish a new user. And you can actually just click there. And it's an online application. Basic information there. It has security questions, whatnot. And if you would like to just pay a bill, just real quick, you go to One Time Payment. And you enter your account number, which I'll put one in here. And hit Pay. And you can see that John Studabaker has an account. As long as he's been gone, he still has an account. It's amazing. Anyway, he lives on 12345 Wheelbarrow Road, by the way, if you know where that's at. But all you do, you can see, he left us with a four cent credit. That was very nice of him. We'll go ahead and pretend we're going to pay $100. And you go there, you can see, you can actually have multiple accounts. So those that have their home premises and maybe some rentals, you can actually bring up your multiple accounts in one account. The email address, I'm just going to paste one in here. And then you enter your credit card. So you're off to the races. I'm not going to do that right now. So let's go back to the homepage. Let's say you would like to, you've already set up your account and you'd like to log in. So we'll do that real quick. And of course, the password's wrong. You got to love these laptop keyboards. They're wonderful. That's because Caps was on, that's why. Oops. See if this is a winner. And there we go. So this is Mr. Studabaker's account. And the first thing I can do is I can go Manage Accounts, and this would actually take me to the various accounts. So if I had, say, three accounts, I could actually select which one I want to drill down in. He only has one. So we'll go into, let's see, Payment History. You can see several billing periods worth of payment history. You can look at Consumption. And you can actually see the usage. You can see the number of days. In July, there was 41 billing days. This, this account actually, we closed out. It was short. So it averaged 9.85 cubic feet, or total usage of 404 cubic feet. And I can also pull up a graph for period and look at my consumption. So by year, you can see by billing period, by year, what the consumption was. Or I can say, I just want to see one year each, what the consumption was, whoops, each by year. And you can scroll down, see that. Or another version is clustering the consumption by fiscal year. The connection's a little slow. It's usually faster on a landline or a regular hardline internet. So that's consumption. You can set up Auto Pay. This account is actually closed, so it doesn't really let me go any further. But you can set that up with a credit card or your checking account or debit card. You can have it be a flat amount each. You can do it monthly, every billing period. It could be a set amount or the actual balance for that bill. Let's see here, let's go back to Home. And Billing History. You can see here, you can actually look at your bill. And I can see that I had a bill of $273.83 on May 10th. It was paid on June 6th, same amount. And I can also drill down and see how much of that bill was sewer. So sewer was $196.48. It was based on 595 cubic feet. And then we have our base rate for water. And then our consumption of 404 cubic feet for water at $19.96. So that's that. I can actually look at my service and provide a graph. So on average, over a 12-month period, I can see my average of $187.82 for sewer. And 57.60 for water. I'm going to click on Water. And you can actually see a graph of that data, or you can see the numeric information there. You can, of course, edit your account. If you wanted to add an account, change your address, so on and so forth, terminate service, or actually add a new account to your, to your account, your Click to Gov account. One of the things you can do, I'll go ahead and log off, is you can also establish new service. By clicking here, you can provide the address. As long as it's a valid address, it will send us an email and we'll work with you in setting that up. So that's the utility Click to Gov. We do have a business license version of this. And hopefully at your next meeting, we'll present that information. It's pretty cool. Any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from the council?
I just have a suggestion. I don't know, you may be already going to do this, but I would just say that we should, on the, on our homepage, we should just have a button so that people just goes, you know, pay your bill, should just go to that button. Because whenever you had to click more than twice, like you lose, you lose people. But other than that, I mean, I think it's great. I mean, it's, it's lovely to see that we've, we've moved into 2020, 2022, whatever. So.
We're coming up in this world.
It's nice to have it.
We'll add that, yeah.
I am excited to see online bill pay. It's, it's amazing that we haven't had it up until this point. So, and just, just so the public knows, this is live. People can sign up right now. It's ready to go. All right.
Okay, full disclosure, will you be charging more if we pay with credit card?
We opted not to do that. We actually want to encourage people to use this because it actually does save us time and money. And so although there is a fee every time we, we have to pay the merchant for that, it actually overall is cheaper. And so that's why we chose it to handle it that way.
That gentleman from earlier would be happy to hear that. Any other, any other questions? All right. I'll open this up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please step up to the podium. All right, seeing none. I'll close public comment on that. Thank you for the presentation. And I'm really glad to see that this is up and running. Item 16 is upcoming agenda items. I will let folks read that at home, on their own. And then item 17 is adjournment. And it is 7:37. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you.